Okay, anyone else? All right. Board, what's your pleasure? Do you want this on action or consent?
Well, since David's not here, I really feel like since this is something, I think we should put it on action.
Okay.
So he could be with us. I know Barry won't be back, but...
Right. Okay, we will keep that one on action and thank you, Mr. Chapman, for coming to us and making us this offer.
Thank you for your time.
And spending your time with us tonight. Okay, next, looks like Kelly Klutz is back up again. And you are just being a jack of all trades tonight. You're going to talk to us about Head Start.
Absolutely. So, we are no longer the grantee for the Head Start grant. So, we, the grantee is now the partnership for children. So Tara Natress can talk with you more about that in the next presentation if you would like. But because we're not the grantee, back in 2007, we purchased a modular learning center for Head Start with Head Start funds. So those are federal funds and so because those are federal funds, there's a federal interest in that party. And so when that ownership changes or the grantee changes, the ownership of that property then needs to change too. And I'll let Sarah answer any of your questions that you might have.
What was the value of the unit?
Back then, I think it was six hun- we purchased it for about $600,000. Somewhere, I can't remember the exact number, it was somewhere around there, but Head Start paid for it, not, not the county.
So the grant funds paid for it, is that...
Yes, yes.
Basically a pass-through grant. Is that fair?
It is, it is a pass-through grant. We're still serving those children through the partnership. We're just not the official grantee.
Right, we're just not tied by the county on some rule on how to transfer these things. We're not tied, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, my question is, now, are they going to move the unit? The unit's still going to be on our property?
Yeah, it's still going to be on our property.
And where, I'm getting kind of foggy on this and I'm, I'm kind of worried on this. The Head Start grant is, it's renewed. And it's not always guaranteed it's going to stay with the same person or the same organization. And I get, I'm getting kind of antsy on this, especially, and this was with federal fund and those children are still going to be our Cabarrus County children and we're still going to, they're still going to be here. And what really concerns me is that I know, or I had heard, now Tara can correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I'd heard and I thought this, this might be incorrect, but, you know, anybody can apply for these grants. Rowan County could have applied for it and the partnership applied for it. And I think Tara told me that somebody had told me wrong because originally they told me that Rowan County had applied for that grant and the partnership applied for it. Then Tara, you came back and said Rowan County did not apply for it, but they could have. And if Rowan County had got that instead of the partnership, then we'd have been Rowan County serving those children even though they've been our children. But, I mean, they could come back and do it next year and the partnership could, okay, come up here and reassure me this, I don't want to transfer property because they're not guaranteed the next time it's up that they could get it.
So, it's a five-year grant, so they can't apply next year. We're within that grant for the next five years. So five years from now, they could, but we have to transfer the property because it was purchased with federal dollars and because now the grantee is a different agency, we have to transfer anything that was purchased particularly of this amount to the new grantee because it was purchased with federal funds. But that will be the process for at least the next five years and then the partnership can continue to reapply for that grant.
But what if they don't get it then? Do they, the partnership, will they have, I mean, but it's on our property. Now, are we going to, what, lease them the property?
We can do that. That's a conversation that we'll have after we talk about the Lockhart lease and after we do the transfer. And Sarah can speak to that a little bit, but until we actually transfer the unit, we can't have a lease for them to lease that back from us.
Okay. Because that, that was my concern because I know that it's not a guaranteed thing every time that you're going to get it because I've seen some other organizations that, because two, you say it's a five-year thing, but then if they foul up and don't pass the reviews, they can lose that within that five years because there's been ones that mess up on the reviews and they get it pulled. So you're not guaranteed that five years if you mess up on those reviews. So those five years are not guaranteed.
That's right. But I would be very surprised if the Partnership for Children had any issues with the monitoring side of that grant.
Well, I mean, I'm not saying that, but those reviews are tough.
They are tough.
They're tough. I've been through them and they're not easy reviews. And if you're not used to those reviews, you're not guaranteed that you're going to pass those reviews. So these things aren't give-me's. I mean, you know, it's just not saying, yeah, you got those five years because you go through those reviews and they're tough reviews. So, I mean, I'm just, I'm putting it out there like it is. I'm telling you like it is that, you know, we're doing this, but, you know, what we giveeth, can we geteth back if we have to?
So, so it's the, we go through, we, we were going through the same reviews and the same audits as the partnership. So there was no guarantee for us either. So, easy come, easy go. So certainly if somebody, if we didn't comply and do what we were supposed to do, then that could, the grant could have been taken from us. And depending on who got the grant, we would have been in the same situation. But we're, we're working together with the partnership to make this work for Cabarrus County students and we want to transfer the partnership based on the federal interest and, and the federal dollars that supported it. But the situation wouldn't be any different if we reluctantly gave it up or we were working with an organization in partnership. But because it was purchased with this money, it just needs to, the ownership needs to transfer. If for some reason in five years we decided to be the grantee again, we would transfer it right back.
Okay. Well, I, I just wanted to make sure that we, how that was going to work and that's why I didn't know if we were, they were going to move it somewhere or if we were going to keep long or if we had other plans for that because I didn't know what we were going to do if it was going to be moved off the site. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else with questions? All right. Board, what is your pleasure on this? Do we keep it on action or move it to consent?
Consent.
Consent, girl one? All right. Ms. Monroe, this one goes to consent for next week. And now we're going to talk about the Lockhart Early Learning Center lease.
All right. So in addition to the transition of the modular unit, because we're partnering with the Cabarrus Partnership for Children for the Head Start grant, it also impacts our lease at Lockhart. And at this time last year, we were doing the ribbon-cutting ceremony for Lockhart and welcomes our 30 or so students into the program. And we are now at a place where the program is up and running. We have children in the classrooms there and things are going well. In order to continue with that partnership, we need to go ahead and update the lease that we have and bring the Partnership for Children into that lease. So there are two major changes that are in the lease from last year to this year. One is that the Partnership for Children has been added into the lease as an additional agency, working in collaboration with us and All Saints Church. And the other is that we've changed to a flat rental payment. Last year, when we brought the lease to the board, we were looking at utility bills from 2013, 14 in comparison to 14, 15, and the difference was the rental payment. Because we've had a year now with children in the program, we've been able to monitor the utility usages and figure out what the amount would be month per month. And we have this lease with All Saints where the only thing we're paying for are the utilities. And that comes to, you can see in the lease, $857 a month, which I would say is incredibly reasonable for multiple classrooms, a parking lot, and all of the other things that are provided to us at the church. I do also want to take this opportunity to let you know that while the lease agreement captures the partnership with the organizations, it doesn't capture some of the amazing things that are happening with this program. Because we're working with All Saints Church, we have the opportunity to have a music teacher. They have built an education foundation, a nonprofit through the church. So we have a music teacher with the students once a week. We have an art teacher with the students once a week that will start this year. We had an open house last week where they had home-cooked meals for over 70 people. We have books that go home with children. I mean, the, the wraparound services in the partnership that is there that is not in the lease agreement is amazing. And so we just want to make sure that we work with Sarah to have everything updated and that the lease can allow us to continue the partnership. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to take those or Sarah may have to depending on what it is.
Okay. Any questions from the board? All right. Ms. Carpenter?
Yeah.
All right.
Like, just thank you for sharing with us what's going on over there.
I disagree. Wait a minute, let me think.
A lot of times the public just doesn't get to hear that, so I'm glad you had the opportunity to share those things.
Okay.
How many children? I, I had to get one in. How many children we have going there now?
We have 36 there, so we have two full classrooms, which is what we had planned for.
Shall we put this one on consent?
Consent.
Consent. All right. Now, we hear from Dr. Van Heuclam and Dr. Auerbach about year-round school at Wolf Meadow.
Good evening. It's been almost a year since we were here last and wanted to get this item to you in the month of October so you could vote on it as we enter into school choice season in Cabarrus County schools. Adam's going to do most of the talking tonight, so you've seen this presentation before. But I will also say Adam's scheduled to go to Pennsylvania next Monday, so please try to get as many questions out tonight as you can so he can answer those here tonight.
Thank you all. We actually came for the cell tower talk, so much of my staff decided to stay for the balanced calendar discussion too, so appreciate you guys making some time for us today. Am I driving, Kelly, or are you driving? Okay. All right, perfect. So, no, we got it, we're good, thank you. So, a little bit about Wolf Meadow before we get started, talking about the balanced calendar. Currently, we are, you know, Free and Reduced Lunch, one of the top two schools in, number of students on Free and Reduced Lunch. Our Title I budgets this year, Addus said about 95% using the community, what's that called?
Community eligibility provision.
Our demographics, about 15% of our students qualify for special ed, 24% are limited English proficient. Non-white students, we have the highest percentage of all the schools of non-white students in Cabarrus County. So how are we doing over the last few years? And there's some data there to show you basically how we've done in all of our EOGs over the last few years and what our percentage proficient was and then the difference from the Cabarrus County average. And as you can see from 2012 through last year, across the board, for the most part, we've closed the gap, getting closer to the Cabarrus County average. In fact, in two of our seven tested subjects last year, we were above the county average in percent proficient at, in those tests. And fifth grade science, which we all know we're a science school, and third grade math, we were highest there. Also with our EVOs growth, in those two tested subjects, we were number one in growth in Cabarrus County. Overall, in EVOs, when you look at our growth over the last few years, two out of the last three years, we exceeded and then the, two years ago, we met our expected growth there as well. So we're growing our kids very well throughout the year. Also, looking at our behavior as our enrollment has increased from, over the years, our number of referrals and our number of out-of-school suspensions for 100 students has continuously gone down too as, due to the great teaching and the good stuff going on by all the people in the green back there. Overall, we've made tremendous progress in our proficiency, our student growth, our student behavior in the last years in spite of the summer learning loss. But Wolf Meadow will never be able to get the same results and the desired results that we want by doing the same thing that everybody else does here. So what is summer learning loss? Summer learning loss is the regression of the student's progress from the end of one school year to the beginning of next year. We see at our school, many students in May, when they take their end-of-year assessments, are reading at a higher level than they are when they come back a few months later. So we're taking three steps forward, two steps back every year. The research shows, you know, students see this a lot, but children from families in lower socioeconomic status, the different things that happen, that they don't do over the summer sometimes has an effect on them more than students in middle or upper classes that have a lot of experiences over the summer. We showed this data last year, now we have another year's worth of data to show. But looking at our end-of-year assessments, again, the levels that our students were at in reading and math, the students that returned, two years ago, or last year, 64% were lower. This year, 67% of our students in first through fifth grade were lower than they were the previous year. So two-thirds of our students come back lower in August than they were a couple of months before. So what can we, what can we do about this? Well, a couple of options that we've talked about before, summer school or adding student days to the calendar. Traditionally, you think about summer school, when we were growing up, or you talk about summer school, it was not a popular thing to do there. And then adding additional weeks to the school year, adding additional days would be very expensive when you factor in everything that goes into making school run on a day. Or we can look at a balanced calendar where it benefits all students and staff and the cost would be minimal. The same number of student days, just spread out differently across the school year. Same number of stu-, of staff working days as well. So we believe that we can close this proficiency gap if we think differently about Wolf Meadow's calendar and we pilot a balanced calendar next year in conjunction with the current things we're doing. And I think that's important to understand here too. We have a very good school. Our teachers do a great job educating kids, but we want to do even better. We're excited that we have high growth every year, but we're not excited that every year when our students come back, we're kind of back at the bottom again. And we want to keep moving and getting up there. So we do great things. Our teachers do a phenomenal job in the classrooms with the workshop model and all the things we're doing, but now we want to make it even better. We want, we want to get better here. So there's a lot of potential benefits to doing this calendar. During the intercession, the, the times when we're not in school at the end of each quarter breaks, gives us opportunities to do remediation and intervention and enrichment activities with our students. It also gives us time to do professional development for our staff. There's never enough planning time, as we talked about earlier, and there's never as, as many planning days because of the way the current calendar is set up. So we can do some planning and some different things throughout the year with our staff there. A lot of research shows teachers spend at least a month reviewing last year's lessons to get them back up to speed. Some, I would say even longer than a month for certain, for certain kids to get back up there. There was a recent article about it, it's actually a cost savings. If you think if we're paying teachers to teach things that kids already learned the year before, we're wasting money every year by doing that. So if we can minimize that, it's a cost savings. Our PTO, raise your hand if you're on the PTO. So our PTO president and some members are here. The, the board unanimously supports this and the staff as well. And I'll go over the data on the parents and the staff in a little bit. This also gives us a potential increase in community partnerships during these intercessions. I've already spoken with some people at UNCC. They would, they love the idea of a school being in session in the summer to be able to send students and to be able to do some things with there because when teachers are going to school in the summer and there's no schools open to do stuff, it's kind of hard. They love the idea of being able to partner with us. It's the same number of student days, so it's not that we're making kids come to school more because we're just spreading it out a little differently, which also gives more breaks for students. With more breaks for students, more vacation options for families, I don't know. Just the other day, I saw Disney's looking at lowering their prices during the off-peak times and raising prices at summer. So for some families, that's going to be an even better savings there. We're looking at higher student achievement because of the decrease in the summer learning loss. Less teacher stress, burnout and turnover. We're, we're lucky at Wolf Meadow, our turnover rate's pretty low. Our teachers are never stressed, they're always happy and that we don't have that problem. But if you've ever been into school in the spring, especially after all the snow days and stuff, it gets a little stressful, so to be able to have those breaks would be great. I think also in this, you know, this day and age with school branding and specialization, we have a lot of magnet schools and each school kind of has their, their thing and this would be ours, which also opens up for open enrollment choices for other families. You know, as we build, expand the school out onto the land, we have room for more, for more students to be there as well to fill in some of those spots. So we surveyed all the staff and this is the entire staff, cafeteria, custodial, secretaries, teachers. Eighty-three staff members took this anonymous survey. Seventy-eight point one percent agree with the change and are, or are willing to try it and ready to start. Sixteen point eight percent agreed with the change, that it was good for the students, but it might not work for their personal lives or they weren't sure yet. And only 4.8% did not agree with making this change for next school year. These numbers are very similar to the numbers when we did the survey last year too, so it's about the same. With our parent survey, we sent home a survey at the beginning of this year to all the K4 students. We had 443 responses, so about 93% back either in paper or by cold calling everybody that didn't turn in a survey to try and get those answers. Seventy-six percent of the students, I mean, the families agreed with the change or were willing to try it. 14% of the set, of the families weren't sure or thought it might not work for their personal lives and only 10% did not agree with making this change. You know, I've kind of talked to get almost 80% of anybody to agree to something is, I feel pretty, a pretty good number about that. Some of the parent concerns, because some parents did have concerns with it, having two different, having kids on different school schedules. So if we're the only school that's doing, that's piloting this next year and they have a middle schooler that's not on the same schedule, that was a concern. So when we talked with some of the parents and we explained that it's not a completely different schedule, you know, the majority of the days, all the kids are the same. You know, we come back a little earlier and we'd have some breaks there, so, but they, you know, we did understand that some families would, would find that. Other parents also said the same thing though. When you have multiple kids, sometimes it's nice to have a little bit more time with one than the other because you don't have that option sometimes when you have them both. But ways that we can help turn this concern into an opportunity is offering the different intercession camps. If we pass this and we know it's done and we have almost a year, because it'd be about a year from now that the first intercession would start, it's a year to plan different meaningful activities for the students during those times that we could have them here and actually have the kids in the building longer to do good things with them. We had some other parent concerns. My children A and A and B honor roll students, I don't feel the need to have my child in year-round school. Even the honor roll students experience summer learning loss, even some of our gifted and talented students. We are lower level reading last month when we assessed them than they were when they left the year before, so this affects everybody. Some were concerned about after-school care. Some of them attend Boys and Girls Club and different things, different programs around. In the survey, we, we asked for input on where they take their, where their children go for summer care, after-school care, so we could start to partner with those agencies to kind of work with them on maybe, hey, listen, offer, can you cut them a deal so they can come in July when we, when we're in school, getting out there instead of the other times and be able to work those things out. Boys and Girls Club, I already met with them last year about that and one of their big mission is, is overcoming starting, summer learning loss, so they were definitely willing to work with us. They send a bus every day to pick up our students as well. But we had a lot of positive comments from parents too. And I'm not going to read them to you, but most of the families that we talked to are very excited about this and the opportunity. We put some of them here, but also the biggest one, I think, is an open house. When you see parents coming through the door, they're so excited to be back and they say, "Thank you, take them, 10 weeks is too long, welcome back to school." But most parents are very, very excited about this. And I think any step that's an effort to improve children's learning is a step in the right direction, was a comment that one of the parents made and I think that's, they understand exactly what we're trying to do. When talking with cabinet and the district leadership here, talking about transportation, child nutrition, Kids Plus, the costs would be minimal. Transportation, in a nutshell, the way we're funded as a certain number of student days since the days, the days are not changing, the same number of days are going to be running, it should be minimal there. Child nutrition and Kids Plus, Dr. Probst felt that the cost should be minimal, if at all, we should be able to work those things out. You know, other districts have balanced calendar schools, so it can work, it should not be a major cost increase. So what we want is we want to make, you know, this minor shift in our calendar for next year to reduce the summer learning loss, to strengthen our community partnerships, provide additional employment opportunities for our teachers and teacher assistants, helping to work those intercession camps, and provide another choice for parents next school year. I think you have copies of the proposed calendar from last year. Is that in the packets?
At least they have, but they don't say.
Okay. So we do not have the proposed exact calendar for next year because the Cabarrus County Schools 2016, 17 calendar has not been finalized. So to be able to make that line up exactly, last year when we kind of proposed it, we looked at this year's calendar and made it sure that all those lined up. Once the calendars, we would have all that straight there. But basically, the way it works, we would start school in the middle to late July, go for nine weeks, have about three weeks off, a fall break right around this time of year, come back, go for three, go for three months, 45 days, the whole second nine weeks, still have Thanksgiving break, go out at Christmas and have three weeks, which would overlap the two weeks of Christmas that the regular calendar's on. Come back, go for the third nine weeks and have about a three, two and a half to three weeks spring break, and then still end school the same day that every other school in Cabarrus County ends. So when they get out, when our last day would be the same day as every other school, so for those families that have multiple students at different schools, they could still start their summer vacation at the same time. Last year when we looked at it, when we did the calendar, there were 136 days that were exactly the same, coming to school. There were about 22 days that the balanced calendar students were in, that the other students were not mainly coming back earlier in the summer. And then the 22 days that students, the balanced counter would be out, the regular calendar would be in mainly the fall break there and the, the intercession parts. So basically, if we really want to be a top 10 district in, in this state in every which way, and I know Wolf Meadow's staff and students and, and parents want to be the best school in the top 10 district, we're asking to pilot this program for next year, this calendar, to see if we can help close that gap and avoid those summer learning losses.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Auerbach. I'll start down at this end. Mr. Fur, do you have any questions?
I have no questions. I think we should give those folks a chance.
All right. Mr. Walter?
Sarah, what gives us the ability to do the flexible calendar when we're restricted everywhere else?
We're, under state law, we have to have certain, there's a, there's a carve-out for, I won't say, flexible calendar schools in the state law. And so the, the provision of the state law that requires us to start school no later than this date in August and finish no earlier than that date, there, there's an exception to that. So long as we meet the minimum number of days and or hours now, we're permitted to do that.
Okay.
And there are numerous schools across the state that use this.
Yeah, what other schools or models that you've been looking at or...
I mean, Union County has some, Wake County has some, Charlotte has some. I think most, most districts have at least a few of them around to have that option.
And they have data that shows that the summer learning loss isn't as pronounced or is it stable or is it increased or what do you think?
Well, I think, you know, when looking at the data, there, there was not a school, I know Dr. Natress and I spent a lot of time trying to really find one that exactly matches up. There isn't one that exactly matches up to Wolf Meadow. You know, there's a lot of parts that go into a school, demographics, size, things like that. I think that, in the research shows that schools that have a higher percentage of students on Free and Reduced Lunch, higher percentages of students with, you know, that are minority generally has a better effect there, which our school would fall into. So there's not an exact school that I'm saying, oh, you know, so-and-so school in Union County does this, I want to follow it exactly the way they do.
But you're going to have a goal like in your school improvement plan that says, you know, instead of 60%, it's half or 50 or 30% or...
Yeah, or, you know, our school improvement plan, the way it's currently written is always about growth, so you always want to continue growing there, but if you want me to have a goal in the school improvement...
Well, if the focus of this, and our decision is to make it, to reduce the summer learning loss, I think that needs to, there needs to be some goal there.
Correct. Yes.
And what was the school capacity?
I really don't...
I mean, you're, and that relates, that relates to making it an open, open enrollment school. How much space do we actually have for, for additional students?
Yeah, I think, you know...
Would be interested in doing that.
One of the, the options, I guess the decisions to make too, would be about the families that really don't want that, the opt-out part. So when, when discussing with cabinet and looking at, you know, the opting out, if say 15 families opt out, do we have those spots to look at to refill, to backfill those with students that want to come there? I don't know if Dr. Van Heuclam would like that?
About, yeah.
We estimate that we'd have about 50 spots for open enrollment purposes. So if a family lived outside of the Wolf Meadow attendance zone and wanted to provide their own transportation, similar to Fur Elementary, Rocky River, that they could make that application and Wolf Meadow would be a part of the school choice season when we have our magnet fairs and things like that.
And if someone didn't, is in the Wolf Meadow district now and didn't want to participate, And if someone is in the Wolfmeadow district now and didn't want to participate, we could give them the option to go to a different school.
Correct. They would fall under that same guideline that we use for Patriots and Colton Webb or in Weddington Hills. So if a family at Weddington Hills, for example, does not want to attend the IB program at Weddington Hills, they can choose to go to, I can't remember what school they're aligned to, Donna might know. It might be FUR, but they do have to provide their own transportation. So we're not going to provide transportation for those families that don't want to attend.
We'll get some of those details by next week on kind of how that works.
Well, basically, if I'm a family at Wolfmeadow and I don't want to go to year-round school, that's just not going to work for my family, then they would be assigned to similar school in the geographic region around Wolfmeadow, and they would be able to go to that school. They would have to provide their own transportation.
But we don't know what school that is at the moment.
We have some ideas.
Do we have to make that decision now?
I don't think so, no.
Okay. That was my question here, and I appreciate the proposal and coming to us, and I think it's a good opportunity for some families, hopefully to make a difference.
Thank you.
Just looking at the data that was given to us with the initial look at a long-term capital plan, Wolfmeadow, design capacity, six hundred and fifty students with modulars, you can take up to seven hundred and sixty-eight, and I think you said you're right at around six hundred-ish.
We're a little bit lower than that this year.
Okay.
We got a little space.
So they could easily take a hundred and fifty additional students if this turns out to be popular.
Well, the module, the mobile unit part would have to be, I know when talking with facilities, it's kind of the way our, we have a lot of land, we're sitting on thirty-four acres, but the way it's laid out with our, the road all the way surrounding the school and there's certain rules as far as how far you have to be from the front door and bathrooms and things like that, so.
All right. But six fifty at least is what's the design capacity, so there's a little bit of capacity. Okay. Ms. Carpenter, do you have any questions or comments?
I think I got mine answered because mine was that you do have an option if a parent just cannot do it, then they do have an option to go to another school, but they do have to provide their own transportation. So that relieves one of my, one of my heartburns that I had because, you know, if they do have children in other school, I could see where we, because that was one of our questions last year that we had come up when we first talked about this, and I see a lot of green shirts back there, and I suppose those green shirts are in support of this. Is that, is that what I'm seeing there? Okay.
A lot of others wanted to be here where they had classes.
As you said, I didn't know if that was for the cell tower or for this one, but so I'm saying that's for this one. Okay. So that's good to hear. Okay. But, and we're going to do this, if this goes through, we're doing this on a trial basis this year to see how it goes. Will we be gathering data that you're going to present back to us at the end of this first trial period then? Because that's what I'd like to see. I'm a data-driven type individual, and that's what I like to see. But I think it's, it would be good to see this, and I think it's, I really appreciate all the hard work that you've done and all these green shirts back here, I think.
They do all the hard work.
They've done all the hard work, and I think we've seen that in all your test scores and seen how you have continuously kept it on a good pace, and I appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you.
Mr. Powell?
Yes, sir. My major concern is siblings that go to schools that are of different age or different level and not being able to match their schedule. And I guess, have you taken any surveys about how many, what percentage of your students are maybe only children or have siblings? I would think it's probably relatively high, but what have some of your parents said about the siblings not being able to match the schedule?
Yeah, I think, you know, again, when we said only ten percent of the families are against it, multiple fam, most, a lot of families that have siblings are still for it because they see the opportunity for the growth. Now, again, there's some families that aren't because they're going to be on different ones, and I think those would be the ones that might decide to opt out and go to a different school. But I also know some of those families that took school choice in the old days under Title I to go to Harrisburg, and then when that ended, had to come back and they weren't excited about having to come back to Wolfmeadow, are now very excited to be there. And sometimes some things that they think might not work out for them end up working out pretty well. So by giving them the opportunity, you know, hopefully if we can vote on this next week and make this a done deal for next year, gives parents, you know, seven, eight months before, well, I mean, a few months before Magnet, but a few months before, after that to get ready for next year and have a plan in place, you know. If you have daycare, if you use a different, whoever's keeping your kids, it's the same number of days, it's maybe adjusting the pay different places. But if they ultimately, as a family, can't make it work, giving them the option to go to another school that is on the same calendar, similar to Wolfmeadow, I think is a fair option for that. You know, I didn't survey, on the survey, it didn't say, do you have siblings or not? I mean, that was not a question on the survey.
I think in the spring, you indicated that it was forty thousand dollars per bus because there would be some additional buses, and now it says that there's minimal bus impact or transportation impact. Talk us through how that, what the change was there.
So the discussion back then was if we chose to bus people that opted out or bus people that opted in. So if we were going to add extra bus routes for that, there would be a cost. If the decision is made that students and families that opt out provide their own transportation like we do with the other Magnet things, then there is no additional cost for transportation in that way.
Pardon me, but I was a former bus supervisor, and the three-tier system with what, you would have bus drivers that are driving when no other buses are on the road during those, whatever, twenty-something days or so, and then they would drive in the regular three-tier with everybody else. Would you still be a first, are you a first tier now?
We are first tier, which I think lends itself well to this plan, too, because on the days when we're out where everyone else is in, you know, it's the first run that's cut off there. On days where we're all there, it's all together. We only have, I think, eleven to twelve buses that run at our school, so the number of buses, you know, is a much smaller amount. So when we think about those July days, because I know Mr. Reimer and I were really kind of talking through that, we have lots of summer things going on nowadays. The third grade reading camp, which might be expanded next year, and lots of other programs going on that we should be able to make ten buses still run fine in those days, and then they would be able to still run those other days when they're, you know, throughout the rest of the year.
During the, during the parts of the school year where you are out and others are in, those bus drivers reduce hours to only have two of the three or possibly one of the two because a lot of them are only one of the two, I mean, two of the three anyway.
About the intercession program.
Intercession. So some of them would be offered intercession driving opportunities, but the others would not.
I'm going to let Mr. Reimer come up and address that.
Oh, no, just.
We worked with transportation on this a little bit. I think Doris spent some time last year as well and kind of went back through some different scenarios with what we would do with those bus drivers in the summer with them. She talked about doing some extra washers and being able to add hours. We ran that past Glenda as well as Kelly Klutz, and they all felt like the time would be almost comparable to what they're getting on a regular basis. But transportation has looked at it. I've got a couple of emails I can kind of forward you with quite a bit of information there if you'd like some more on how it kind of breaks down and what summer camps and summer programs that they would kind of piggyback off of to be able to make that time up that were missing as well as, and I think I just pulled one of the emails up, we use the term washers at transportation, and so they would be able to pull some hours there.
Are there not any other schools in other districts? I know Rob asked that question before, but just to be able to see what their schools are doing, or is there's no other school in particular that you guys have kind of visited maybe or?
Not yet. I've spoken, I have some friends that I've got my doctor with in Union County that used to be at year-round schools, and when we started talking through this, looking at different things. The program, the instructional program will be the same, you know, that we're not changing our whole instructional program. So I think that's an important thing to remember. It's not, you know, what we're doing during those days is not going to look different now. The intercession part, which will be a big planning piece, what are the camps and enrichment opportunities, what is that going to look like? To be honest, I started doing some of the work, but I didn't want to spend too many man-hours planning all these things and building these partnerships, these community partnerships to say exactly how it's going to look and then it not go through. If I'd have done that a year ago, I'd have spent all that time and we wouldn't have it this year. So as far as modeling, just after a certain school, I have not done that.
I'm sorry, last question. I know Royal Oaks was year-round at some point not long ago or several years ago, I don't know, a long time ago. What year was Royal?
It ended around two thousand, maybe before that.
Around two thousand, okay. Any, I know that you, I think Carolyn brought it up last time, that maybe there was some lessons to be learned by that implementation or?
Does anybody know why they stopped?
I can just tell you, it's like lots of other things, there are all kinds of reasons why, and to be honest with you, so much has changed even with transportation, the size of the system. I don't think it's a really good thing to necessarily compare to, and it's just so different fifteen years later that it's hard to pull anything from that. But if you're looking for a specific reason, I think it was just, they just decided it wasn't necessarily doing what they wanted it to do. And again, I'm not even sure we have anybody that I know of that worked there at that time that still works for the school system to be able to kind of ask some of those questions. Yeah, it's pretty tough to find out exactly what the issues were there. That's what I know.
And I think, you know, the data that we got in schools fifteen years ago was minuscule compared to what we get now as far as the assessments and the way we look at things. So it wouldn't, it wouldn't even be, it wouldn't be apples to apples to even compare back then. Wouldn't be apples to oranges. I mean, it'd be very different. So, you know, and I know it's a risk, it's a challenge, it's something different, but the thing that I know for a fact why this will work is because of the people in the green polo shirts back there. And they are, they do great stuff throughout the year, but when they, when we come in at the bottom when we start the year, there's only so far we can get. If we always start at the back of the pack, we're never going to get up there. If we can just get to the middle of the pack to start, I know we can be at the top by the end of the year.
All right. Thanks. Adam, I have one question for you, and it only occurred to me while you were giving your presentation, so if you're not ready to answer it, that's okay. You can come back later. How will this mesh with the summer reading camps?
So I will not be able to host summer reading camp next year because we'll have regular school going on. We've hosted it the last two years, so, yeah, we can go during intercession.
So that is allowed by the state that we can, so, but we pick those students based on their test scores at the end of the regular school year, which you said would be your regular end and will be everybody else's regular end.
Right. After Christmas, other than maybe an extra week at the spring break, the counter will be almost the same. So we just come back earlier and then we'll end the same time everybody else. So we'll take our EOGs in May the same time everybody else does.
So instead of having the, instead of having a summer reading camp, it'll be sort of a week here, a week there, a week there, which might turn out to be better than, it would be an interesting experiment at least.
When we talked with families and parents that had a lot of questions about it at first, you know, we kind of used the analogy of, you know, watering, watering a potted plant, you know, really hard and not watering it for a couple of weeks as opposed to watering it every other day and just kind of keeping it steady that way or gardening or whatever analogy you want to use, but taking what we're doing and spreading it out a little more instead of just crunching it all in.
Okay. And my other question is probably more for Dr. Van Huglem or perhaps Matthew Fail, who's going to be coming up here anyway, and that is, can we, that data that you showed on the number of students, percent of students who experience a summer reading loss is striking to me. And so I'm wondering, do we have that data for all of our elementary schools? And if so, could you share that? Because I would like to see if it's, you know, district-wide, are we at two-thirds of the students or is it a half or, you know, where are we?
That is fascinating. You have to do that by hand, I would assume, right?
Yeah. Our lead teachers polled kids, you know, who was here last year and this year and looked at it and then went through it and tallied it up and put it all together.
Might be a good exercise for our schools to do that, just to have that same comparative point, though. It is a staggering number, and then you could also compare it by demographics with schools, right? So you could see your highest need schools versus your more affluent schools to see if, what kind of trends you could pick up from that.
That would be fascinating because it's always puzzled me how we can be, you know, leading this region, if not the state, in growth, the number of teachers that meet or exceed growth, and yet we still have, you know, a sizable percentage of students that aren't proficient at the end of the year. And it's like, if we're meeting growth every year, shouldn't we be proficient at some point? But if you do have this large fallback during the summer, and it's like you said, you take three steps forward, you take two steps back. And so it's hard to.
And we see that, you know, with, at the beginning of your assessments, where I can look at our, you know, at the end of last year, seventy-five percent of our second graders were on grade level in their math DE tests. This year, three percent were when they came back. Now, in third grade. So we see these things, you know, and we grow them, grow them great while they're there, but when they start, some of our students are well below grade level, so they'll get high growth, but they're still below grade level when we get there. And the goal is if we can keep making high growth and string together some good years of high growth, we should be able to get over that proficiency line, too. And like I said, in two of our seven tested subjects, we were over the county average this past year.
Very good. All right, Board, what's your pleasure for next week? Do we put this on consent or action? Action? All right, yep, and we'll let David also, will be here then. So we'll keep this one on action. Thank you, Dr. Albach and Dr. Van Huglem. So we'll put that on action. Next is going to be Matthew Fail with six point oh eight school improvement plans. And I understand that you've taken a slightly different approach this year with those, and maybe we'll give them, thank you, everyone from Wolfmeadow for coming out and showing your support for this effort. So, Matthew, I'll let you take it away and tell us what's going on with these school improvement plans.
All right. Thank you. So as you could tell, if you've had an opportunity to review the plans, we did revise the school improvement plan template. This came from feedback from the schools around and from our desire to reduce paperwork and the amount of time that our teachers and faculty spend on certain activities. So the plan has been simplified, but yet still contains some of those critical components around being able to state a goal, being able to give us the key action steps. As they move forward, there's still going to be a mid-year check, more of a conversation than a revision to the plan itself, although it's still living and breathing, they can certainly add or delete steps as they move forward. And then there's an end-of-year check as to whether or not they achieve those goals.
So I think the idea tonight, since we have such a full agenda, was not to take questions on the individual plans, but that if you, any of you have questions on individual plans to, I guess you'll send those to me and I'll collect them and forward them on to?
Yes, please.
Matthew Fail for him to respond either by email or we're at our meeting next week. And so also, if you're like me, you haven't had time to go through all these yet, so you can't make a decision on whether to put this on consent yet, and so I would recommend that we keep this on the action agenda for next week and just in case any questions come up. Does that sound okay to everyone?
That sounds good.
All right. Thank you.
Sounds good.
So now, we're going to go to something that's just a little bit harder, but hopefully still easy. Tim Louder is going to come up and talk to us about the sixth classroom expansion at the new Odell Elementary School.
Good evening. I'm hanging here. Hit my seventeenth hour here this morning, this afternoon. So anyway, okay. As you know, we got the county to approve a budget of one point three, one five million dollars to add six additional classrooms at Odell Elementary School. We got through with the pricing, it came in a little higher than we wished to have it. Mr. Bill Oflin with Mosley Architects worked with us to help modify the design just a little bit, to help bring some of those costs down, went back and negotiated with a contractor and modified that pricing, was able to bring the pricing down a little closer where we wanted to be, and we were able to go back then within the And we were able to go back within, within the existing funds we had available for the project, using 100% of our contingency of the 81,500 up front, which is one, a big chunk of it, borrowing a little bit from the information technology. She was gracious enough to give us a little bit of her money back. We took some money from furniture engineering, furniture and finishes to allow us to, to pull that in, and then we took another $79,000 from within the existing contract allowances, which leaves us still with about 115,000 there, so we didn't really deplete those. And we still did not touch the contingency of about 300-plus thousand that exists for the entire overall project. But altogether, the funds were made available so that we can actually award this and get it started, you know? So we are recommending you award based on this very inclusive, I guess the best way to say it, funding that we pulled together to make this happen. You know, as we talked about earlier, we were hoping the cost would be just a little over $9,000 per student. It would end up being about, about $9,800 per student, which is still a very good bargain considering average school costs is from between 20, 21,000 dollars for elementary school per student, so.
What was that number again, 9,800 per, per student?
9,840.
9,840.
That's the total, that's total project cost, FF and E and everything.
For, and we're getting 100, basically 150 seats, is it?
150 new students, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Louder?
That doesn't affect the construction timetable?
Not if we prove it now.
No pressure, no pressure.
But no, that's really, but no, 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 it, you know, if, if, we, we were afraid, you know, if we cannot bring, you know, the monies to the table, we were kind of really hoping we could have it here last month, but we, we took a little while to negotiate that out. But we feel like if we do not do it here, we will be pushing our schedule just a little.
All right. Well, I, I'm also with, with you all to put this on consent, but I do have one question. Could you give us just a quick update on where we are on the full construction project? Are we on schedule?
Actually, the construction project is moving very well. It is on schedule. They're doing well. It's, it's almost completely dried in. We, we have not set frames and windows yet. We have set frames, we have not set windows, but we are sheet rocking, and they are putting all the cabling trays and everything in, and, and all the wiring is complete. We do have, they are setting the final roof trusses for the gymnasium area and the cafeteria area, which they had to do back and do some block removal because they had some tests to fail, and we had to remove some material there, so that put that a little bit behind schedule. But the overall project itself is, is doing very well.
And also, what, what is the situation with the solar requests that we, we put out?
Right, right now, that is pretty much on hold. They came back to us saying they could not find the adequate financing from investors to be able to do it for the amount of payback they were going to get over the period of time. And at this point in time, we would have to have some contributed capital on our part, which I'm not quite sure we're willing to do. So we've asked them to revise it a little bit and go back and look for investors again. They're going to ask us to look at some, maybe some local investors that might be from a philanthropic standpoint, might be interested in investing in the project, but if that doesn't happen, it may not.
Okay. Yes, because I, I saw that the state has now ended the, the tax credits, I believe they're credits, not deductions, for solar projects. So we have to get a project going by the end of this year, or else it's gone by the wayside. Okay, well, let's put this one on consent. Now move on to the next issue, which is the highway improvements associated with the Odell Elementary Project.
And this is basically a placeholder, let you know where we are. The project, we did get approval from NCDOT about what the driveway had to be and where it had to be, and the design has been completed, has been back submitted for them for final approval. It also has been submitted to the contractor for his final pricing on that design. We have not yet received that final price, and we were kind of hoping we'd have that before this meeting, but we, we certainly do hope to have it before next meeting and come back in there once we, we will determine whether it was within our budget and we feel it's a reasonable price, and be prepared to present that price to you at the...
Okay, so it sounds like this one, we just keep on action until next week, when you can have the full information.
Please.
All right, so let's just write that down. Action for 610, and that brings us to 611, which is Central Cabarrus High School Master Planning Architect Selection.
Yes. As you know, we had in the budget this year a, a master planning for Central Cabarrus High School. It was not included in the overall study because we want to come back and look at Central Cabarrus as a, a unit. It is getting up in age, obviously, over 50 years old. We feel like it's still got good bones, it's in a great location, it's really not something we can just kind of pick up and, and build over. But we wanted to look at options and, and see what our best options were to be able to, is it feasible for us to put, you know, 10, 20, or 30 million back into this school and have another 50 years out of a very good school and a very good location, upgrading it to meet the standards of, of all the new schools we're building? Or is it not feasible, or is it better to, you know, relocate and build another, another high school? So that's what this allows us to do, to do that master plan and look at all those different options. We went through the selection process. We had 15 firms submit their qualifications to us. We narrowed it to four. We had a selection committee sit down and interviewed those four, and at this point in time, based on that selection committee's recommendation and also the construction committee's recommendation, we took the construction committee for their, their approval. We're recommending Yates-Creisberg Hughes for, for this project.
Who was on the selection committee?
Myself, Dave Burnett, Vince Powell, and the principal of Central.
Andrew Crook.
Andrew Crook.
And who, and who was the last person you said?
Andrew Crook. He's the principal of Central Cabarrus High School.
Okay.
Being in the selection as well.
Can, I mean, can you tell us who the final four were, or, I mean, is that something we...
We had Yates-Creisberg Hughes, we had Boomerang, and we had, which used to be the old Martin Anthony, Martin Bull Anthony Johnson, okay, a firm, they're called Boomerang now. And also, we had Marshburg, and then...
DTW.
DTW, yeah, I was going to say KTW. DTW out of Durham.
Out of Durham.
Yes, ma'am.
I believe YCH is the one that was involved in the upgrade project that we did for, like, windows, and so I think...
It was the upgrade to the administration area, and then some energy glass, and so also some areas back in, back with the roofing.
So I guess that's one thing, is that they, they have familiarity with the existing layout because they were involved in doing all that.
That was one of the factors. It wasn't really the biggest factor. The biggest factor was they came in with a, a pretty good group of ideas of what they felt like, you know, options could be, from everything, from, you know, modifying the existing school to, to allowing us to, you know, use that existing structure, to also to building another structure on that same site, and then utilizing and reconfiguring the site as that way. So, you know, they gave us several options there. Of course, you know, obviously, none of those were set in stone, they just came in with some, some ideas which you felt were, were pretty, pretty thought-provoking as far as that's concerned in, in the, in the presentation.
Other, Mr. Powell?
One, one thing that stuck out, I think, with the committee was that they wanted to involve the school community, and they were, you know, mentioned several times that, you know, they wanted input from as many stakeholders as they could, and to, to be able to develop this plan, and having a working knowledge of the campus, having done a project there was also a benefit. And that was, I think, some of the, some of the biggest points that stuck out for, for Yates-Creisberg.
Mr. Walter?
I appreciate the additional explanation, because just saying, they have a great deal of experience working with Cabarrus County, makes it hard for us to really analyze that, so...
That is true. They've actually, I think...
They've done a lot of school, I know they have done a lot of schools, Concord Middle and, and J.M. Robinson, is that right, or that?
Did they not, what, the Hickory Ridge High School? Did they? Yes, I'm sorry, yeah, did Hickory Ridge High School, did Cox, he did all the elementarys, Weddington, Irving, Linekoff, all those were all Yates-Creisberg schools as well. Rocky River was the other one, yes, and Harrisburg.
I know we had a few issues, I think, in the past, I may be, my memory's not what it used to be, but I think with some dealings at Hickory Ridge, did that, did they bring that up? It seemed like we had a third-party lawsuit or something.
Yeah, I think that was somewhat construction-related with the construction...
It was construction, it was a, yeah, I'm not responsible, you're responsible type deal. I don't remember how that played out, but...
This is for a master planner, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Oh, I, I have a question for, for the master plan. Is the goal to look at options for maintaining the existing capacity, or to look at options for increasing the number of students that we can have at that site?
The, the goal was to modify the school to increase the capacity somewhat, not to go to 2,000, okay? Probably in the 1,600-student range, which is, is 1,500 now, plus or minus, plus, well, mobiles, it's getting up close to 17, but it has been up as high as 18 in the past. But our, our goal was to, to go back in and modify the structure to allow, because we have 1,600 kids in that school right now, it's not a functioning situation with the, with the amount of space we have for cafeterias, for the open space, for the auditorium, for, for, for just a myriad of reasons, there's, there's deficiencies on this campus. Plus, the sports facilities really haven't been upgraded in a very, very long time. They did put the new turf field in here a few while, while back with, you know, a lot of effort on their part. But, you know, the parking situation is not good, the, the overall, just flow of the school itself is not, security issues are there because, you know, we've had four or five additions to this school in the past, and, and none of them really tied the school back in to function and, and, and that sort of thing properly. So the whole point is to look at all those factors, tie those in, find out the best way we can either make those come up to speed, or else demolish some of the school, add to the school, or even totally replace the school. All those options are on the table, but our whole point is to come up with a, a very detailed plan, a schedule of how it would happen, because one of the problems we have if we decide to upgrade the school, existing school, how are we going to do it if we still have to have a school with 15,000 kids in it, okay? So that's going to be a big part of the master plan, to be able to come up with some master schedule as well to make that happen. So there's, there's all kind of things that have to go into that master plan, but at the end, we hope to have a dollar figure, a timeline, and what modifications need to happen so that we can put those into a capital plan for you.
Okay, yes, now that, that's where you go. I'm just looking here at the, the data on school capacities, and this one says the design capacity for Central Cabarrus is 1,350, which I assume means that's what the core facilities were designed for, and obviously now we've got well over that, and I think where you really run into constraints, there are in the core facilities, and you, like, you compare their, the size of their auditorium to some of the other high schools that, that we have, and it's truly constrained, and the, the question then becomes, you, how do you get a new auditorium in an existing facility without, like you said, disrupting the entire school day?
During our presentation, we have some pretty good ideas on that, so hopefully we'll come up with those. It looks like pretty good.
So it'll be, this will be a very, very important study that'll give us a good idea of where, where we can go with that school.
That's the same cafeteria that Tim and ate many of lunches at, and it's also the same auditorium, so, that's been a 40 years ago.
Well, as a matter of fact, I think when I was there for their concert, I did see a TF carved in one of the seats, so I don't know if that was you.
Only one? One of the things that we had talked, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead, Vince.
One of the things that we had talked about was taking all of the interviews that we had, and there were some, some pretty good ideas that came about from, from all the firms that were presenting, and just kind of put everything out on the table and say, you know, here, here are tons of options, and, you know, just kind of run with it and see, see what, what the dollar amounts are and the timeline and the feasibility, I guess, with being able to, to have school and that kind of thing. And so that was, that was part of, part of the reason why we chose that, that firm, we, we felt real comfortable with YCH, that they would be able to incorporate more than just the basic ideas of, you know, keep the school or not keep the school. And so that was, that was part of the decision process.
And then my point, and I think last time we talked about this, was it's only going to get funded through a bond process, probably likely. So what's the timetable that we would get something back to be able to, to move forward with, with something like that?
We, we hope to have something to you probably by mid-spring, four or five months down the road. We feel like that's a doable situation here. It is something that we, we have to work at pretty steady if we're going to do that, but then again, if, if we do do it in a bond package, we'd like to see it maybe in the first tier, if possible, but that just really depends on what other projects you decide to include.
But you need the project, you need the, you need the data in order to...
I need the data, but also need the dollar value that it's going to necessarily, that way, like I say, we're not going into a hard design here. All we're doing here is a concept and a budget. Once they have a budget, we will go into the same design process.
An idea to be able to start selling the project.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I feel that this definitely needs go on action, though, because I think some further discussion needs to be discussed.
Okay. Is there any additional information we should ask Mr. Louder to try to research for us?
Not at this time. I'll, I'll send you questions if we've got...
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so Ms. Monroe, 6.11, we'll go to the action agenda for next week, and that brings us to our final two, which have to do, topics which have to do with the North Carolina School Board Association Annual Conference that is coming up next month. And as part of that, we need to discuss our availability of our board members to go to that conference. And from the tally that I have, Ms. Carpenter, you're going to go for the full, full conference. Mr. Schumaker has told me that he will be there on Monday and Tuesday. I also am planning to be there on Monday and Tuesday. Tim, Fur, and Mr. Powell, I believe you said you have conflicts and will not be able to attend, is that right? Okay, and Mr. Walter and, and Mr. Harrison were still trying to clear up their calendars.
Monday only.
Monday only? Okay. So, so Rob is a definite for Monday only, and Mr. Harrison will, will find out next week. So I think that's all we need to do on this one right now, I believe, is, is, because, but what this does do is it leads us into the next one, 6.13, which is, we have a form that we have to fill out that says, here are the people who are going to vote on behalf of the Cabarrus County School Board, and we, because of our size, we are allotted four voting delegates and one alternate. So I think based on what I just heard, this is going to be pretty easy. Mrs. Carpenter, Mr. Schumaker, Mr. Walter, and myself will be the four voting delegates, and Mr. Harrison would be the alternate, if he can, can make it, so. Is everybody in agreement with that?
Do we need to vote on that?
We can wait till next week when Mr. Harrison will be here and we'll vote on it. We, we do have to vote on that next week? Okay, all right. So we will, we'll keep these two on the action, I guess, and we'll get Mr. Harrison's input on 6.12 when he's here next week, and then we can vote on the alternate and the voting delegates next week as well. And believe it or not, that brings us to the end of our agenda before we go into closed session. So I am now willing to accept a motion that we go into closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A3 to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, which privilege is hereby acknowledged, and pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A6 to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer or employee, or prospective public officer or employee, or to hear or investigate a complaint, charge, or grievance by or against an individual public officer or employee, and pursuant to General Statute 115C-319 through 321. Can I get such a motion?
I would make a motion that we go into closed session.
All right, Ms. Carpenter makes a motion?
Second.
Mr. Walter, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No, passes 5-0.